Thank you sir.
Thank you. Namane variyum in nayaratil ah inga orunganithu orunganithrul orunganithu orunganithu indha life divine payilvadarkaha anithu keerpadugalayum basadigalayum vayipugalayum namakkeerpaduthikodu the shi annaykum bahavanukum modalil nam nanriyayum manakkatiyum tharivippom inga nam pesam over vaathayyum sindikkum over ednatthayum annaykum bahavanukum kaanikiyaha samadhippom anayvarukum maali vanakkum the meeting aaramigatikunnaadi oru thahavali naan ungaludan pagundakolle virmigirain engalode shi orabindha society smithrow cheney kilaayin secretary thir aarvaavavhal inra maali inra kaali ethanode udalai vittu shri annayin malarpadaangalai adandavittar ourode ah anma vin nalathir kaha nam annaydam oru iranthanamidam amidiyaha prarthippom thir aarvaavavhal engalode society la oru 20 orishama engaloda enindu venindavar romba mukya panga panga treyavar anala ourode yedrapo ondu ah romba oru periyedrapu thank idhunala manayinode sangalpam ah eva arulathu indhu namal arandukollambe yaadu ourode anma ah mehom unnadamana leki ah vadiil payanipadarkaha nam annaydam oru iranthanamidam amidiyaha prarthippom nanri thank you, thank you very much. For the chapter thirteen life divine la the divine maya apathitra konaba pona varo open sheets ah iranthe rigvathil endhe iranthe open sheettekalapatham, velakkatthai patham from paragraph one haday aaramithom ah the paragraph only enna pathongada oru briefa nampe pathattu merekonda thodarlak bahavan enna soligirarantral the namloode sayalkal aniththimi yedu yengu kirathu yedu uruvaakirathu namil yedu yengu kirathu yedu uruvaakirathu indhu patham manal namil ulanthe existence adu than sayal padigathu adu than uruvaakirathu the existence endhu the sat adu namloole irkum andh sat adu than yengu kirathu nam aatrivikkum karayengal aniththimi oru artist aha arkatum oru poet or musician aha arkatum avral unmaylaye avral yedithothruvikkaraal enral avarhul avralul yedu ondra ulathu adhitthaan avral veliikondu varikondu varikararkal avralala yedu yedu avralala avralaga yedum veliil thothruvikpada lay avralaidam yedu ulatho adhitthaan avral veliikondu varikararkal avralil illada ondra avral thothruvikpada illai so veliil sayappanam karayengal ellami ulle ulle irupadu than veliil karayengalaha velipadikintana ah anal ah in the sristi all creation aniththimi it is nothing but self manifestation oru velipadu irayvanin velipadu the satin velipadu than nam namloode sayalkal yavame nam nenathukondirikrom nam than nam nam than andh sayalkalai sayikrom indhu indhu ennatthi ennatthi nam mirikrom anal unmaylaye nammooril irkintan the sat existence adu than andh karayethai sayikrathu adhey ponru yedu url irkathu adu than thanne velipaduthikolikrathu adarko udaraanam minnavenral oru marathin vidayirkintathu andh vidaykul andh marathir kana aniththu moelak koorugalam adange uldana adu than maramaha velivarikintathu adhey ponru oru uyiranam thontravatharka adanode andh cell material the plasma adanul andh uyiranathin aniththu vadivangalam adanul adange ulathu adu than andh uyiranamaha velivarikintathu in the ulle adange ulle andh sat endhu adu maremohumaha ulathu adu thanne thane unandathu thanne thane aarindathu monraavadu monraavadu karuthu manidharal ondra oru karithi sayalatrumpodu adhey paagupaduthi kolikrarkal eppey enral andh yendha sakthi sayal paduthikirathu andh sakthi veve veeraavum andh sayyum porul veeraavum in the sayil andh karayethin velayvaha eerpadum aatrivikka padum thothruvikka padum porul veeraavum veveeraaap piruthu piruthu ennukirarkal eppey orukko oru manpana sayavavhar andh mannay veeraavum andh sayyum theramayae veeraavum adhey ponru andh manpanay veveeraavum parkrarkal o adhey ponru manidhan sayalatrumpodu veveeraap piruthu parkira anal bahavan enna koorikirarantral unmaylaye yendha sakthi andh sayalai aatrivikkathu adhey poli yendha unarvenelai the individualized consciousness avanai karavyaha ubhyavathukolikrathu adhey ponru yendha porul yendha porule avan ubhyavikirano adhey poli yendha vadivathayavam avan uruvaakirano idh aniththimi onru indhu bahavan koorikiraa adhavu it is one existence, one force, one delight of being that concentrates itself at various points. One existence endral sat, one force endral chit sakthi, one delight of being endral ananda. The sachchit ananda than veveer nilagallil veveer mayathil thanne nilaykolikinrathu nam manidhan than adhey paagupaduthi nenathiparkiram anal sachchit ananda than aniththu nilagallilum onraaak kaanappadikintathu in the monra mukyamana karthikale nam pathom merekonda nampe the chapter kulla poala the divine maya inra andh thaleppi kana mukyathothayum nam pona varo pathom the divine maya inra kuraapadu the olagam sristikkampudu irayvan andh infinite anantamaha ellai kadandirikkum andh iray sakthi in the puvil thanne ellai kutpatthu velipaduthikolubodu yendha sakthiin moramaha oru ellai kutpatthu thanne velipaduthikolikinrathu enral in the divine maya inra sakthiin moramaha infinita harkakoodiyavunru anantamaha ellayatr uvarambathru irakkoodiyavu irakkoodiyavu sakthi in the puvil the parabandhatil oru vadivathirkul oru ellai kutpatthu thanne velipaduthikolikrathu adu velipaduthikolvatharkana oru sakthiaha sayalbadu thanh in the divine maya. Maya endhu oru poi kadeyadu oru mayathothram endhu kadeyadu in the karthi nam kavatthil kulla veyndam eppey the paragraph two hadkumela number kulla poala sundar sir join pandara
Ah yes sir.
Ah okay, thank you sir, thank you.
Paragraph two. What it produces is itself and can be nothing other than itself. It is working out a play, a rhythm, a development of its own existence, force of consciousness and delight of being. Therefore, whatever comes into the world seeks nothing but this to be, to arrive at the intended form, to enlarge its self-existence in that form, to develop, manifest, increase, realize infinitely the consciousness and the power that is in it, to have the delight of coming into manifestation, the delight of the form of being, the delight of the rhythm of consciousness, the delight of the play of force and to aggrandize and perfect that delight by whatever means is possible in whatever direction through whatever idea of itself may be suggested to it by the existence, the conscious force, the delight active within its deepest being.
Thank you very much sir, thank you.
Thank you sir.
In the paragraph oru esence maya karthu enna abhina ah yedu in the parabandhatil thothruvikka padikathu sristikkapadikathu adu aniththimi in the sachchit ananda idh monrayum thanul thannilirundu virivaki adhey velipaduthi adhey adayave virmikinrathu ovvunrumi ovver porulam ovver jeevanam the sachchit ananda idh monray in the monrayame monray menindhu monray monray monrumi onrodindhu enindhu thanh the monra amshangalime adanode adhey yendhalavuka adhey adhey adayamudimoo andhalavuka adayavirmikintana adu thanh idhunode artam adhavu idh vandhu mee nampe olakathalakkaanakkodi vishyengal ellamy vandhu merepuru thala nambalala adh unarambe yaammarukla sachchit ananda nampe yerkanave nampe pathirkom the olakathil kaanappadakkoodiya nigarvigal thotrangal ellamy vandhu sachchit anandaavin yedhunnelagala kaanappadikintana anal idh vandhu oru thotram thane uriyae andh yedhunnelagala kaanappadakkoodiya andh sachchit ananda yedhunnelagala kaanappadikintathu thotrangalil moelamahave sachchit ananda thanne velipaduthikollavirumbikintathu adu thanh the olakathinode yekathinode adipaday tathuvam in the bahavaninga kuraakkodi karthu enna na olakathil thontrakodi aniththu vadivangalam aniththimi sachchit anandaavin the monra amshangalai uchka kattalavil adayavirmikintana velipadutha virmikintana idh thanh idanode essence of the parag- idanode maya karthu explanation nampe kulla poala
Sir, read pandu sir.
Ah padigim madam please.
We have seen in the previous paragraph that it is sachchit ananda that creates it is sachchit ananda that is created and it is sachchit ananda which it is created. We come to the conclusion that what it produces can be nothing else than itself. The whole creation is a working out a play, a rhythm, development of its own existence, consciousness force and bliss. That is the ananda. Therefore, whatever comes into the world seeks nothing but sachchit ananda. It seeks to arrive at a definite form. In that form, sachchit ananda enlarges itself existence. Then it tries to increase, develop, manifest and realize the entity that was born within. Then it includes the growth of delight of the form of being, delight of the rhythm of consciousness and the growth of being. Whatever way possible, whatever the direction possible. So whatever idea of itself suggested by the sachchit ananda deep within itself.
Thank you, thank you. In the first paragraph la patha karthu enna na yedala andh olakathalakka creation sristikkapadikintaro adu sachchit ananda thanh aniththimi sachchit ananda sachchit ananda thanh thanne thane sristi sristihtakolikinrathu sachchit anandaavilam irundhu thanh aniththu sristikalam eerpadikintana anal yedavalam inga undakkapadikintathu adu sachchit anandaavai taviira veeru illai in the unmayi nam purindukolla veyndum in the aniththu sristiime in the oru velayattu thanh the play oru ritham development of its own existence in the monra sachchit anandaavin mondu nilagalaana the existence, consciousness, force and bliss. Sat endral sat existence endral sat, consciousness force endhu chit sakthi, the bliss endhu anandam. Idh monrayime ah monrayinode velipadu thanh the olakathil kaanappadum aniththu sristikalam in the karthi thanh bahavan vandhu adikadi in the maribadi maribadi omover paragraphli in the idh stress pannigirar valiyuruthik koorikirar anal in the adipadala thanh nam paakakattugunam sachchit ananda in the adipadala pathom abhina bahavan solakkoodiya karthikale nampe ah yedhida unarambe yaum mukyamana in the in the idh padikambodu enna thiranjukkana abhina ah in the pona chapter la patha mukyamana karthu enna abhina in the olakathalakkaanappadupavai aniththimi sachchit anandaavin yedhunnelagala kaanappadikintana andh yedhunnelagala kaanappadum vadivangal thotrangal kul sachchit ananda thanne kandu unandu kandu unandhu velipaduthave mayalikinrathu in the karthiyam manadala vayathukondupaduthal yedhavam bahavan solakkoodiya karthiyalamme puriyom adhutthu vandhu in the olakathil varaakkoodiya aniththimi ah sachchit anandaavai thanh adukintana abhingirar ah adu vandhu oru vadivathai enna olakathalakka thothruvikka padum thotrangal ellamy kandipaha oru vadivangal kul thanh thothruvikka padano illati adu thothruvikka padambe yaadu andh vadivangal kul ah andh sachchit anandaavai adu viruvpaduthikollavirumbikintathu andh vadivathirkul in the sachchit anandaavai adu yendhalavuka adu vandhu adu vandhu ulle vangi adhey andh andh alavil alavil ah yendhalavuka adhey peridupaduthikollambe yaum andhalavuka mayatsikintathu adhey ponru andh chit sakthi sachchit sakthi adheyam andh thotrangal vadivangalay endh aniththimi yendhalavuka thannilirundhu velipaduthambe yaum andhalavuka velipadutham mayalikintana adhey pola anandathayum yendhalavuka velipaduthambe yaum andhalavuka velipadutham mayalikintana in the idh vandhu idhka adipadayaah adipadayaah in the monray yekathirkum adipadayaah yedu yengu kirathu enral ovver vadivathirkul li irkum sachchit ananda adu thanh adanode adanode aanaypadiyadhanode adanode aachik adanode direction na solvar bahavan in whatever direction possible through whatever idea of itself suggested by the sachchit by the sachchit ananda deep within itself. Adhavu yendha nokkathil yendha disayil andh valakshis aha veyndumo adhey ponru yendha ennatthin pal in the valakshis nadabare veyndumo adhey aniththimi yedu mudiyu sayikrathu enral in the urlirikkum aar nilagallirikkum sachchit ananda ovver vadivam thotrathirillirikkum sachchit ananda thanh andh velipuramaha yengum thotrangal vadivangal adanode ah yelbai vadiyinadathikintathu indhu bahavan koorikinrathu idh vandhu nambari merepura thotrathkennamana terile anal unmay adu thanh indhu bahavan koorikiraringa aniththi yekkangalamay in the parabandhatil yengakodi aniththi yekkangalamay sachchit anandaavai thanh velipaduthikintana sachchit ananda thanh aniththi aniththi nu lirundhu avatra yekkahirathu indhu mukyamana karthi bahavaninga koorikinrathu adharal in the olakathil kaanappadum yekkangal ellamy oru oru nokkam illamal nadabaravathu illai adu oru nokkathu oru nokkathudanayeh thanh aniththu nigarvugalam yekkangalam nadabarikintana indhu karthi nam kavatthil kulla veyndam illa veeradavu velakkam tevai lena adhutthu paragraph poala number
Ap- ap- apri patha namakullayavandhu sachchit ananda irukka iliyaa
Kandipad madam, sure.
La psychic being lan soladinka adu adu thani adu namakulla manushanulla vandhirkadu but sachchit anandaanrathu vandhu irukka adu thanh appai in the sayalbadugal la sayirtha na tapusenjanam adu thanh sayirtha illa vandhu ellamy na sayirtha murukkave adanode sayalbadu thana
Adhavu idh allana aarathala sachchit ananda thanh irukkudu merepura thala adu sayalbadu varumbodu adanode adanode sayalbadu vandhu urumattram aahirathu illan solakal anal aadi aadi ma aarathala sayalpadu adu ellathime ellathukka moelakarannamaha irupadu sachchit ananda thanh anal adu vandhu namroode merepura thillathu sayalbadumbodu adu vandhu urumattram aahirathu sachchit anandaavai opposite status thanh velipadiga adu thanh impo namlo namroode namroode prachniyadu thanh eppey enna pathonna namasachchit anandaava unmaylaye nambari sorubam sachchit anandaava irundhal kodha adanode yedhunnelagala thanh nam yedhunnelagallil thanh nam kaanappadikintaro iliyaa adhey kadandu veliveram adu thanh anal nampe unna unna oru unna oru point illa nampe aaradu ningi kettikali romba armyana keldvi romba arputamana keldvi kettinga onra oru unmay ninathanam aaradala adaila enna adailana ennadha nam kurayu kurayu kurayudan sayalbadhalam kodha sachchit anandaavin yedhunnelagala namroode sayalbadugal amindhalam kodha idh vandhu eday edaypatthu nilay thanh indhu bahavan koorikirar idhikadandhu namasachchit anandaavai full murumayaha nam velipaduthu voom abhingirar idh vandhu oru edaypatthu nilay abhingirar in the manam vaaru inghintu nilayilla sachchit ananda vandhu yedhunode adu vandhu oru adhunode yedhunnelagala uruma urumarhi sayalbadigathu but idhikadandhu murumayaha manigan thanne ah velip- murumayaha thanne avan the parabandha anantathudan ninathu thanne viduyipaduthambe yaum in the kuraygalirundhu midu murumayaha sachchit ananda sachchit anandaavai velipaduthikirana indhu bahavan koorikirar ningi kettikeli 3rd 4th paragraph la
Oh, sir.
badil vodhu
Sir, sir.
Adhanala ningi romba arputamha kettinga romba excited nalla kosinathu elarka kettikoodiya keldvi thanh na tapusenjanam sachchit ananda thanh tapusayida abhingiradu romba nalla keldvi adu adu elarka yerekkoodiya keldvi anal adu kadeyadu adu vandhu oru urumad urumarhi nilay anal adu mari viddu adu adu kadandhu sendru viddu voom adhino kida namadu parinamavarchi sendru kondirikintaro
Ah, sir.
Okay, thank you sir. Poi maythi maythi thanh kadandhu sendru.
Ah, sir, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I have doubt, sir. I have oru doubt.
Yes.
Sir, ringarani oru doubt sir.
Please.
Ipom madam vandhu namakulla irkathu psychic being adhalam vudunga anal in the madhri sah- tapusenjanam kodha adu sachchit ananda manna yeppon namatapusayrom abhin solrathu adu yar solranga sir?
Tapusayrom.
Ipom namatapusayrom abhin solrathu yar?
Tapusayrom.
Enna psychic being, psychic being, enna psychic being edutha chalrathu ni tapusayir.
Psychic being, psychic being, iliyaa psychic beingrathu sachchit ananda thanh namo odambu sachchit ananda thanh ugyir sachchit ananda thanh pranam sachchit ananda ellamishadhi thanh 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 the rigvathilasolrathu saar lasti ningalay vastinga madam
Ah, ah, ah.
Aarva bharav solrathukumunnaadi madam ogalaputhu lasti kandhi
La, la, adu padichai, padichai anal vandhu adu andh unarven nilayilla velipadrathu ipon na sayalpadru unarven nilayilla velipadrathu sachchit anandaavana thanh enna keldvi enna aarathakulai psychic being sachchit ananda na psychic being arkaadu serai but nam mailotama sayalpadrane andh sayalbadu sachchit anandathurode sayalbadana enna enna keldvi irundhu
Adha keldvi romba arputamana keldvi madam enna tapusayum bodhu dey ni tapusayira abhinjirutti ninga vandhu pona darah unga pona idh annayin nool bail kudila oru kural vandhu erdi dey ibri panna kodhaadu ni sollo adh taanti bohami ennan kakkono ninga romba pona darah annayin bail nool kudila romba arputamha solinga pona dikkumundina darava adiyeshi pona darah ninga solinga ulkulayendhu oru kural vandhu idh pandhadu sarilay abhinjirutti romba arputamha rendi ningalay
La, la, adhal thanh dekithu sandhagam varam
Ah, yel oru point I would like to mention.
Please sir.
Thank you here.
Please sir.
In Bhagavad Gita chapter two verse forty five reads like this Taigunya vishaya vedas mitrayuguna bhavajana Nidbantho nityasaraspatyo nityogashem aatnavanam sollikar here andh meaning padika yella doubt clear aidhathu in English the translation the vedas concern is with the three gunas be without the three gunas or jana free from duality ever firm in purity independent of possession you will be possessed of this self as capital so when everybody possesses the self by following the method given by the bahavan there will be no problem at all
Exactly, younger.
I read Maharshi Mahayogis five pages given articles on that cool rhyme it's really not studying.
Okay.
Okay sir, it's time for us to.
Ah, okay, okay madam, okay, okay. Thank you madam, thank you. Thank you. Next paragraph poala.
Ah, yes sir. Paragraph three. And if there is any goal any completeness towards which things tend it can only be the completeness in the individual and in the whole which the individuals constitute of its self-existence of its power and consciousness and of its delight of being. But such completeness is not possible in the individual consciousness concentrated within in the individual consciousness concentrated within the limits of the individual formation. Absolute completeness is not feasible in the finite because it is alien to the self-conception of the finite. Therefore, the only final goal possible is the emergence of the infinite consciousness in the individual. It is his recovery of the truth of himself by self-knowledge and by self-realization. The truth of the infinite in being, the infinite in consciousness, the infinite in delight, repossessed as his own self and reality of which the finite is only a mask and an instrument for various expression.
தாங்க் யு. தாங்க் யு சர். தாங்க் யு. இது மேடம் கேட்ட கேள்விக்கு ஒட்டிய அமைந்து உள்ளது. மனிதன் என்ன மனிதனுடைய நோக்கம் திருச்சித் நோக்கம் என்ன என்றால் சச்சிதானந்தாவை முழுமையாக வெளிப்படுத்துது. கம்ப்ளீட்னஸ். கம்ப்ளீட்னஸ் வந்து மனிதன் வந்து முழுமை நிலையை அடைய வேண்டும். முழுமை நிலையை அடைந்தால் தான் அவனால் அவனால் சச்சிதானந்தாவை முழுமையா வெளிப்படுத்த முடியும். இப்ப நம்ப வந்து எந்த நிலையில் இருக்கோம்னா கண்டிபா முழுமை அடையாம நிலையில் தான் இருக்கோம். அதனாலதான் மேடம் கேட்டாங்க. ரொம்ப அருமியான கேள்வி கேட்டாங்க. நம்ம செய்ய குடியைகள் செயல்களேலா அனைத்துமே தவறு செய்தால் கூட அது சச்சிதானந்தாவின் செயல்பாடா என்று கேள்வி அவங்க கேட்டாங்க. கண்டிபா நம்ம தப்புதான் செய்றோம். நம்ம நிறைய அதுல தவறாதான் செயல்படுறோம். ஏன் நம்ம தவறா செயல்படுறோம் அப்படின்னா அது வந்து சச்சிதானந்தாவின் முழுமையான வெளிப்பாடு கிடையாது. என்ன காரணம் இருதான் நம்ம முழுமை அடையாது நிலையில் இருக்கோம். சோ மனிதனா இருக்க கொடியா வந்து ஒரு ஒரு எல்லைக்குட்பட்டு ஒரு பினைட் இண்டிவியுவலா இருக்குற. பினைட் இண்டிவியுவலா இருக்குறவரைக்கும் மனிதன் வந்து முழுமை அடைய முடியாது. அவன் தன்னைகடந்து அந்த இன்பினிட் ஆனந்தத்துடன் தன்னை இணைத்துக்கொள் இணை விரிந்து விரிவுபட்டு இணைத்துக்கொள்ளும் போதுதான் மனிதன் முழுமை அடைய முடியும். அப்போதுதான் நாம் சச்சிதானந்தாவை முழுமையா வெளிப்படுத்திக்கொள்ள முடியும். அதுவரையில் சச்சிதானந்தாவின் குறையுள்ள வெளிப்பாடுகளாது தான் நம்முடைய செயல்கள் அமைந்திருக்கும். அந்த கருத்தை தான் நீங்க பகவான் கூறிகிட்டார். மனிதனுடைய நிலையில் வந்து ஒரு இடைப்பட்ட நிலை, ஒரு குறையுள்ள நிலை இன்கம்ப்ளீட் ஸ்டேட்டஸ். நம்ம இருக்குது எல்லாமே இன்கம்ப்ளீட். பட் வீ அர் ட்ரெவலிங் டுவர்ஸ் கம்ப்ளீட்னஸ். இந்த கருத்தைதான் நீங்க பகவான் கூறிப்படுகிறார். விளக்கத்துக்குள்ள போலாம்.
சர் நான் படிக்கிட்டு மா சர்.
படிங்க மேடம் பிளேஸ்.
வாட் இஸ் து மீனிங் ஆப் எக்ஸிஸ்டன்ஸ் இன் து வெர்ல்? It is to achieve the goal of completeness of its self-existence, of its consciousness force and of its delight of being, that is Satchit Ananda. It is to be realized at both levels of the individual and the whole, which constitutes the individuals, individual and collective. Whether man as an individual can achieve such completeness, Sri Aravindos says, the individual consciousness is concentrated within the limits. It is contained within a limited formation. That being the case, absolute completeness is not possible in your finite form. It is contrary to the nature of finite individual who is a relative being in the material world. தாங்க் யு.
ஓகே. இது ரொம்ப இந்த பகவான் இந்த கருத்தை வந்து ரொம்ப ரொம்ப தெளிவா பகவான் சொல்லிகிட்டார். என்ன சொல்லிகிட்டார் என்றால். And if there is any goal, any completeness towards which things tend, it can only be the completeness in the individual and in the whole, which the individuals constitute of its self-existence, of its power and consciousness and of its delight of being. நம்முடைய வாழ்வின் நோக்கம் என்ன அப்படின்னு அப்படிங்கிற கருத்தை பாத்தோம் அப்படின்னா வாழ்வின் நோக்கை என்னன்னா போரணத்துத்தை ஏது வேதுவது? போரணத்தும் அப்படிங்கிறதுக்கு என்ன இங்க பகவான் கூறிப்படும்? அர்த்தம் என்னங்கறது பார்க்கணும். போரணத்தோம் அப்படிங்கறது பகவான் கூறிப்படுகிறது. சச்சிதானந்தாவின் மூன்று நிலைகளிலும் போரணத்துத்தை ஏதுவது? மூன்று நிலைகள் நிலைகள் என்ன? The set existence. Chit, consciousness force, மூன்றாவது அந்த ஆனந்த. இந்த மூன்று நிலைகளையும் நம்ப வந்து வாழ்வில் போரணத்துத்தை மூன்று நிலைகள் மூன்று அம்சங்களிலும் நம் போரணத்துத்தை எட்ட வேண்டும். அது வந்து ஒரு தனிமானிதிரேடம் மாத்ரம் இருந்தால் பத்தாதியான்று பகவான் கூறிகிட்டார். ஒரு தனிமானிதன் கிட்ட நிறைய பேர் அந்த தனிமானிதன் கிட்ட வந்து ஒரு தனிமானித அளவில் நம்முடைய வரலாறை வரலாற்றிப் பாத்தோம். ஆன்விக பெரியொர்வள், ஜானிகள் நிறைய பேர் வந்து அவர்களைப் பொறுத்த மட்டிலும் இந்த நிலையை நிலையை அடைந்து உள்ளனர். ஆனால் முழுமையாக அடையவேண்டும். முழுமையும் என்ன ஒரு தனிமானிதன் என்பவன் அந்த ஒட்டுமத்த முழுமையின் ஒரு அங்கம். இந்த இரண்டு நிலைகளிலேயுமே இந்த போரணத்துத்தை சச்சிதானந்தாவின் போரணத்துத்தை அடைய வேண்டும் என்று பகவான் கூறிகிட்டார். Both individual and collective. அப்படி நம்ப ஒரு நிலையை ஏதும் போதுதா அது உண்மையிலேயும் நிலைத்து இருக்கும். Otherwise என்னவன்னா ஒரு தனிமானிதனுடன் இண்றுவிடும். அது மற்ற மற்றவர்கள் அந்த நிலையை அடையமாட்டார்கள். அது வந்து ஒரு ஒட்டுமத்த மனது குலத்திற்கும் பயனுள்ளதாக அமையாது. பகவான் என்ன கூறிகிறார்? ஒரு மனிதன் வந்து ஒரு தனிப்பட்ட நிலையில் இருக்குறவரை இருக்கும் வரை இந்த போரணத்துத்தை எட்ட முடியுமா என்று கேள்வி எழுகிறது. பகவான் என்று கூறிகிட்ட கூறிகிட்டார் என்றால் இந்த ஒரு தனிமானிதனுடைய உணர்வு நிலை இண்டிவியுவல் கான்சியஸ்னஸ். அது வந்து ஒரு ஒரு குறிப்பிட்ட எல்லைக்குள் வரம்புக்குள் அது அதற்குள் குவீந்து அமைந்து உள்ளது. கான்சென்ட்டேட்டடா இருக்கு. அந்த அட்டத்துக்குள்ளதான் அது அமைந்து உள்ளது. அது வந்து ஒரு குறிப்பிட்ட வடிவத்திற்குள் அமைந்து உள்ளது. அப்படி இருக்கும் பச்சத்துல இந்த எதெல்லாம் வந்து ஒரு எல்லைக்குள்ளோ, ஒரு வடி, ஒரு வரம்புக்குள்ளோ அமைந்து உள்ளதோ அது வந்து ஆனந்தமாகாது. அதுதான் பகவான் கூறிகிட்டார். இந்த அப்ஸிலுட் கம்ப்ளீட்னஸ், அப்ஸிலுட் அப்ஸிலுட் கோலிட்டி அப்படிங்கறது ஒரு வரம்பு வரம்பட்டுது. வரம்புக்கு அப்பார்ப்பட்டதான் அப்ஸிலுட் அப்ஸிலுட் என்று அம்சம். அப்ஸிலுட்னா அறுதியிட்ட தன்மை. இந்த அறுதியிட்ட தன்மை அறுதியிட்ட குடம் என்பது எல்லைக்குள் இருக்கும் எதற்குமே பொறுந்தாது. ஒரு வடிவமோ, ஒரு இயக்கமோ, ஒரு ஜீவனோ அப்ஸிலுட்டா இருக்கணும் அப்படின்னா அது வந்து எல்லைக்கடந்த ஒன்றாக இன்பினிட்டாக ஆக வேண்டும். அப்போதுதான் அதுக்கு வந்து அப்ஸிலுட்னைச் சொறோம்.
Adayivadu kadinam enna Bhavan koorikindra. Adanaal than nambrudaya sailbadhikal ellami kurayavahakku kurayuladha aminduladhu. Vipurudhi tartchamayam manidavavam amindulanenelil. Een kurayuladha aminduladhu muranbadhikaladha aminduladhu ennaal? Is the than karana. Namellamay oru varayarikut oru finite aha oru finite oru varayarikul puttatta varivangalukul nam sailbadikindro. Is the than karana.
Sir, can I comment for a minute? Lord Krishna commands Arjuna, be without the three gunas. Be without activity, be yourself. This is resolute consciousness, the state of absolute being, which is ultimate cause of all causes. This state of consciousness brings harmony, the whole field of cause and effect, and glorifies all life. Avilin sollikam sir.
Romba excellent. Andha moonrugu gunakalim kadandu sailvendam. Adanae pona tharavakada refer panninga. Andha number as long as we are, we are acting, we are bound by these three gunas. Nambo ontha Sachidananda manidhanan nelaile sailbadron sollamudiyadu. Ananamselfoda self ontha absolute liya selfie is a part of the absolute. Amblu kulirakadu self onkathu it is a part of the absolute. Once you act from the self, then you are acting above that moonrugu gunakalim kadandu sailbadikindro. Nambrudaya puranathum mananilaile am sailbadamudiyam.
Exactly sir, exactly.
Adha, adhe than unmai. Niksonnaka pona tharavakada refer panninga. Andha moonrugu gunakale kadandu nam sailbadavendam.
Marayigala thiripian chutradha.
Romba sandhosham, korla kettamam sandhoshma.
Ninnamara oru pidi padichesu vandanthanga.
So, irundupi me magichisam. Ninkandha maathirmanthirikuporengaa abdina andha sail, andha oru sailamrum magidvatharavudha iruddhu. Ninkandha thiripijay jainmanikiringe adu magidvatharavudha iruddhu. Allami.
It is grace of the brother.
Grace of the mother than allami.
Thank you.
We do not want to miss this.
We do not want to miss this class.
Mother, that motherodiyah, setup maria amindirakka. Ninkandha andhirakka.
Thank you sir.
Nambar than idhar edumay nae, enna thariidhanai edumay nambar pandrathu illa mother than pandhrang. Idhavada namblakavano, uh, thaeve.
Proof veda.
Proof, proof thaeve illa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Padikitinlassa?
Ah, padinga madam, padinga, please.
Then, what is the way out of? Then, what is the way out for the individual? The only possible way to realize the completeness of sachidananda in him is the emergence of the infinite consciousness in him. How to achieve this objective? The individual has to recover the truth of himself by self-knowledge and self-realization. He must recover the truth of the infinite in his limited being, of the infinite in his limited consciousness of the infinite in the delight of his being. He must repossess them as his own self and reality because his finite form is only a mask of the infinite. It is the only an instrument for various expression. We have seen in the previous chapter that there is a self-loss of the infinite in its many aspects in its manifestation in finite forms. The individual has to recover this last infinity which is hidden behind the appearances of finiteness. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you very much, thank you. Pona portionilla patho manidhanen bhavan oru vadivathir kulirikindra. Um, madam jainmentka angolodiyah benefitka just repeat pandram. Varunol la so that avnga oru. Adavathu sachidanandavi, eh, en the completeness puranathum ennaal? Ennaal? Manidhan, manidhanuravavvin yelakku ennavenral? Puranathuthothi edavendam? Puranathum enra, vaarthikkinga Bhavan kodukakoodiya vilakam ennavenral? The sachidanandavin moonrugu amshangalileum manidhan puranathu ethu edavendam. Existence, consciousness, force and bliss. Andha moonrugu amshangalileum manidhan the puranathuthothai adayavendam. Abdingarare. Anam manidhan ipparkakoodiya nelaile vande edhu puranathuthothai adayamudiyadu. Adayavarudhu kadinam enkinthara. Enna karana ennaal? Manidhan vande oru varayarikut sailbadum, oru vadivath, vadivathil kul sailbadum oru jeevanaga irikindra. Ena adu finite level la vand sailbadikindran. Ananal, in the puranathum inbadhu, absolute, infinite, idai saarndhu. Indha talathai saandhu. Oru finite, oru yellekul sailbadum, andha talathai saarndham manidhan, the puranathum inbadhu, adarku mail talathai saandhu. Infinite. Adai saarndha oru talathai saarndha, uh, amsam than indha puranathum inbadhu. Adai manidhan adayavadu kadinam. Enanada adu vandhu myelva onodiyelbukku, ipperi thappodu irukakoodiya, nilaikkum murananaadhu abdingarare. Adanaala than manidhan adayivadu kadinam. Manidhan vande puranathuthothai, ip thappodu irukakoodiya nelaile adayivadu kadinam enra Bhavan koorikindra. Vadivathirkul sailbadum, sailbadum oru jeevanaga irakkum varai, oru finite form kul oru varayar, oru onodiyah consciousness andhore limitedaha iruk sailbadum varai, the puranathuthothai sachidanandavin, andha moonrugu amshangalin puranathuthothai edavodhu kadinam enra Bhavan. Pona portionilla, adha explanation patho. Madam, pona thanala just I am repeating for, for their benefit. Indha paragraph enna Bhavan sollikirana? Appanna variyenna, what is a way? Tanimanidhan appanna, tanimanidhan, oru manidhan sachidanandavi namsamana, thanudhey sachidanandavi oru, um, than, thanul, um, kondulam manidhan, adonodiyah puranathuthothai adayamudiyada enra kailvi edhishindhu. Adarku Bhavan enna koorikiran, koorikindrar ennaal? Manidhan vande, uh, yeah, andha ipparkakoodiya unarvinilai vande, oru yellekutpatthada irikindhu. The yellekutpatthada irakkoodiya the unarvinilaiyai, yellek, yellek kadandu unarvinilaiyaga, andha neliyay ettu marai, ettum poru than idhu mudiyam abdingarare. The only possible way to realize the completeness of sachidananda in him is the emergence of infinite consciousness in him abdingarare. Andha infinite yellek kadandu unarvinilai, avanul irundhu velipada vendum abdingarare. So, ipa adhuk enna solution enna abdina? Nambar kakkoodiya consciousness individualizeda arukkudu, thanudiyah, the than enkiddra, uh, unarvu ego. Egoistic consciousness la irukro. Finite level la irukro. Adillirundhu edhu velipada vendam ennaal? The infinite consciousness, adu yellek kadandhu the unarvinilai avanilirundhu velipada vendum. Apporudhu than indha neliyavanaal ettamudiyam abdingarare. So, adu Bhavan enna, enna koorikindrar ennaal? Indha, thanithaanay adivadu, self-knowledge and self-realization. Self-knowledge and self-realization abdina? Enna artam ennaal? Namnannit, mananivarama madhu nam engintra, ennananikirama, naanahi andha odabba abdinaanikirama? Illa, yivaraasindikkum naan ennaanikirama? Konja mic yaro, mic onlar. Okay, thank you. Uh, adhe ponra, uh, madam.
Shanti sollu.
Am shanti irukkanga sir, microphone onla.
One, one minute half, half minute.
Neen half.
Shanti madam konja angolodiyah mic maathra half anyvichikina. The self-knowledge and self-realization, nambo, nambo nanachitrukadhu, naanahi naan, indha pairudaya naan, idhalaa naan nanachitrukro. Andha unanam sindikkum naan, yivaraa unarvinilaiyilrakkum unachikulodanudaya naan nanikirama. Anaa adu naan kadayadu, naan kadhu. The truth of self-knowledge and self-realization, the real self, Sudarsan sir sonnaru, romba armiyana kattasunnaru. Self unmayana, self atman, adhitana unaravendam. Adhuk Bhavan enna koorikindrar ennaal? Atmanin oru, atmanin oru pradhanadiyaga namul sailbadum. Indha saithya purushanay, purushanay nam unaravendam. Adu than nambrudaya unmayana, the self-knowledge and self-realization karadhu. Saithya purushanay kandunarathal. Adu than amblapurathaki nampa aprathana edathakunna. Bhavan mananay, indha variyile vandhavam vandhu, avnga oru eliyavalii sollitharang ennaana? Aanmanil varudhal enginthra nelaiki, unbaga, the saithya purushanil, nambo adhe, adhenilirundhu saithya purushanay naalumail nam, nambrudaya sailbadhikalai, uh, sailbadakattukalavendam, adonodiyah naalumail nam varavendam, adhi kandunandhavaaravendam. Adu than Bhavan engke koorikiraa. By self-knowledge and self-realization. Self na the true self. True self, true self onkathu atman, nambo Bhavan enna koorikindrar ennaal? Atmanin oru pradhanadiyaga angamaga sailbaduvadhu than. Parinamvarachil thaneedupaduthikondru, sailbadum oru angam than, amsam than, indha saithya purushan. Adhi kandunandhavaaravendam. So, merepurathil varamal, nambl, adhanul, adhanikanduvandhavaaravendam. Apporudhu than the unmay nam, we must recover the truth of the infinite. Ipva vande, the anantthithin unmay, abdya unmay, marayinduulladhu. Enambar merepurathil thirukonamblu thiriadu. Nambar nanachitrukro, nambo vande oru, oru, oru sadhana manidhan abdina nanachitrukro. Anabdi kadayadu. Namblu kulirakadhu the irayvan na, irayvan the anantham than namblu kulirakadhu. Infinite, we are part of the infinite. Ananambo oru finite nambo thotra kaachi alikirama. Nambar adu ulle poittu, nambar, 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 nambrudaya unmayana sorubum, sorubuthanam unarano. Unarandhu, appadha vande, the limited consciousness, varayarikut irakkum unarvinilaiyilirudhu, in the infinite, ananthamana unarvinilaidha nam inayavudiyam. Adu maathramla, moonrugu nelailem unaramudiyam abdingarare. Edhunna first vande onodiyah existence, sambrudaya existence vande limiteda arukka, adha infinite, infinite level kanaamblada adayam, unarathu, viyathamudiyam. Irundavudhu, nambrudaya unarvinilai vande, ipva vande oru varayarikut, varayarikul sailbadirikindhu. Adhayum nam, the infinite level kuh yellek kadandu onraga nam virupadathamudiyam. Moonravudhu nambrudaya aanandam vande oru kuriyadavil undhu, adhayum the infinite in the delight. Ovvaru amsettilum nam finitea arikindro. Adai infinite, andha level kuh nam, uyirada nam, nam velikkonaravendam enra Bhavan koorikiraa. We must recover the truth of the infinite abdingarare. Andha truth of the infinite abdingaradhu, yellek kadandu onrin unmay, adu namblak, namblu kulirakadhu. Ananal, adu vande nambo vande finite, oru varyar, varayarikutpatta oru mayatho, oru thotratthilkeladhu thani adhukul, thani marathikondulladhu. Idai manidhan thirumbi konarathu repossess pananana abdingarare Bhavan. He must repossess them as his own self and reality abdingarare. Enanadal? Because his finite form is only a mask of the infinite. Avan velil, velil thotramalikkum, andha oru, uh, oru vadivathirkul, erpetta oru yellekul, erpetta oru thotram, oru mohammudi, andha infinite oru anantthithin mohammudi thanayoriyay, unmayliyavani infinite enna Bhavan koorikindra. Adu vande oru thanithaan, thanithaanay velipaduthikollum, the mohammudiaga sailbadikindhu. Adu vande oru karvidan. The finite form inbadhu, oru karvidan. Anantham thani velipaduthikollu, the prabhajitthil velipaduthikollu, thairindhatuullu oru karvi, amayuthu than in the finite form. Ananal, adarku pinnaali ekkuvadhu the infinite. The, pona chapterli patho nambo vande, the infinite vande thani erandhulladhu, self-loss and self-finding enna patho. The prabhajitthil abdina thani erandhu, thani thaa, eh, edho, edharka pinnaalo, marayindu irikindhu, andha infinite. Andha self-loss vande self-find pananana thiripi, thani kandunaravendam. Apporudhu than andha manidhan vande, uh, edhu erandhu, edhu erandhurukkana ennaal? Andha anantthi erandhurukra. Infinite erandhu oru finitea arikindra. Adayaman thiripi, uh, meetamudiyam enra Bhavan engke koorikindra. Uh, so, idu vande romba oru varputumana karuthu. Nambar nanachitrukro marai, nambo vande oru, uh, kurayulla oru vadivathirkul sailbadum. Manidharakallala, namakkapinnaalirupadhu anantham infinite divine, divine than amblu pinnaadiirukkudu. Adha nambo vande, namblu, namblu de velipurath thotram, ellami, adu vande oru mohammudiaga marathikondulladhu. Nambar anivaram mayarchisaidhal, the anantthathodan, the anantthathodan, namul, namul irakkum, namayekkuvikum, andha yereyamstodan, nam inayamudiyam. Inayimporudhu, indha ellami vande, eh, bedhalaa vande namblukakadegala arikindruno, adhelam vande, adhadegal ellami namblala likamudiyam. Andha karuthi Bhavan koorikindra.
Sir, you know, an important point which you made. Again, see Bhavan says to Arjuna, the field of that absolute wisdom is not outside you. You are not to go out anywhere to acquire it. It is within you. You are wanted to be within yourself, possessed of the self, your form, the purity of your being, be capital.
Romba unmayidharadhu. Ena ipa, idu vande, idhu thieriyaa arukla, oru aammi unmayaa arukla, uh, tathoridhyaa kodaa arukla. Anan, indha, indha karutha vande nambar evlakul ulla vayankiramo, nambar vaavvil sandikakoodiya avlo prachanigaligalirundhu nambo vande oru, oru swandarama arukla. Enambar ellarik, ellarikme edho oru, uh, patho abdina, namblu de nerungi, nerungiavakal, avgeladu vedhaneela kastaparanga. Evloto thunbangalvarikindhu. Uh, namblu nerungiarakali nam varikindro. Adi epala vaavvil evlao vandha, vandhalam kodaa, ninkasonnamari, andha karuthenaana, nambo ullo, ullo arundhu namblu kulirakarandha samrajya. Adhey aalak, aalak, adhey aalak kodiyatharami namblukatharukkudu. Andha samrajathik vande, yaar vande raja abdina, nambar than raja. Once andha samrajathavande nambo vande, repossess panittom abdina. Velila nadakkoodiya endhan nelaikal vande namblavande, no doubt bhaadikum, but, but again, nambo vande, adu namblam meetukondru vandhalaa. Um, nambo veli, puranikeshigal, oru thakkadelgal yenndhu, nambo vande, adhigaalavula bhaadikamara arukla. Ena as a human being or sadhana, namblala, elarami paduthittom abdina. Kandipa puranikeshigala nam bhaadikke than padarom, adhi illan sollamudiyadu. Ananamblu sikrara recover pannila, oru normal nelaiki varathuku sikrara recover pannila. Epabdina, ninkasonnamari, nambo ullekulirakarandha, uljeevanudal, uljeevanil varakattukondru abdina. Nambo vande, the velipurathilirundhu varum thakkadelgal, uh, yatrathavugal, idheelaa nambo vande, samamaga bhaadikke mudiyam. Adhanil, adhanil, eerpudum bhaadipugalilirundhu nambo romba, uh, bhaadika, adhanodiyah, teevarathilirundhu nambo vande, uh, tapithukollamudiyam. Idu vande oru mukkamana karuthu, niksonnu romba armiyana point saradhu. Ilvaeradhaadu karuthu kuraavurumpingala?
In the paragraph, I think it is of, uh, high importance enna nanikiraa sir. The reason is, Bhavan is, ittananaala ellam vande namk, deep analyze pandine, nambo, uh, individual on earth, alirukkara kurayinivakal, adhelaakin sollitte vandhitte, manidhan yeedukkela vande ipva ulasramapadra abdingumpodhu, kuray key word sollu, the individual has to recover the truth. Adha, adhuk, abdingaror pointengi kondru vandrar, of himself abdingaradhu. Adhi eppri panamudiyam abdinaaka, rendu vishyaadhu la, by self-knowledge and self-realization. Answering avare kudustarindha paragraphla. Now, the self-knowledge nambe eppri, eh, varaaporu namk, self-realization eppri varaaporu, abdingaradhu, adhuttho focus namk. Dippa nambar pandrathas, uh, kootum mayarchi, padikaradhu ellami vande, it leads us towards the self-knowledge and the application of it in our day-to-day, is the than the second part self-realization, abdina enakthonru.
Correct, nik romba sollu, romba armiyana karuthu. Nik sollu romba correct, romba sari sir, romba sari.
Sir, saarjan me ketchindhu, how to bring this skill of bringing light to remove darkness? It's very simple. Adhuk kene, avge practice pana, amal mudiyam.
Kandipa, adavathu, um, nambrudaya live divine padikadhu ellami vande, parallella, practice panna, pannano, adhrona sandehinga kadayadu. Pantrathuk, ennaana abdina, namblukvande first vande awareness vandhro. Uh, oru, nambo oru mariyare varakamari act panitturunna, idhalaa thirinchittaparao. Nambar react pandadhu thappugkada first unarvo, adu first step. Nambrudaya reaction vande thappugkunarvo. Andhuranga reaction odiyayenndhu konjamajima nambar velaiikala.
Beautiful.
Uh, adu than, nambar, namblu maya pathuk, nambar, nambar, namblu, namblu eya romba oru, uh, parabatchamillaama, namblu, namblu eya oru evaluate pandrathuk, nambar paaksenseera pandhano abdina. Kandipa nambludiyah kuraygal yenndhu, nambar yeembeda react pandro. Nambar react pandadhu sariya, thappa, abdingalmar over nambrudaya reactions, onu oni nambo vande oru, saatsi manabavatthodan, nambar paakkathittom abdina. Andha first vande, uh, anan oru vishya enna abdina, mother and Sharabindho vanta parao, nambrudaya kuraygal vande namblukak romba sutti kattapadro. Uh, adhrona sandehimme illa. Nambar, idha, panittan, odane namblukvande, mother and Sharabindho, ni pannadhu thappu, peshanadhu thappu, maru enna, ennaadhu thappu, even think panna kodaa, indha enna vande, nalayennaunla, idhu vande thagirakkoodiya ennam abdingarare oru, awareness vandhro, mother vanta paro vandhro. So, andhatagirakkoodiya idhalana vandhona, thagirathikittayidha varanoo. Twenty-four by seven process than, lifelonga panniyavanaadhu. Uh, it is a long process, but motherodiyah, uh, mother and Sharabindho vanta paro enna abdina? Adu vande, nambo edha, in the mayarchila, nambo konja, nambo oru kastatha face pandro abdina, adhmatat offer pandambodhu, motherodiyah help andhathra kedakkudu, adu, nariyambarakal vande sollidukaranga. Oru nambertakadu oru kuray velvatharku kodaa, namblala mudilaina kodaa, mother, motherodiyah, arul mulama, mother's grace, we can overcome our own defects and shortcomings. Provided we are sincere abdigananga. Mother enna sollu, nik sincere aravam abdigananga.
Sincere.
Ni vande unmaylaye, unkitamirudhu, andha kuray neekavirupana, ena kandipa odavi purivay abdigananga. Ananala, motherunyay, motherun, intha, intha, idhalamay, padikronliya, padikronliya? Idu vande Bhavan vande, idhu thieriyasollu. Inno oru, oru volume thirty-two la, of course Bhavans, Bhavan adhu romba, romba cleara sollidukara, enna abdina? Ni motherat vandittabdina, idhi ellami practice pandrathuk, motherodiyah grace onakke helpfula arukko. Live divine, enna napandrammo, enna napadikrammo, Bhavan sollukkoodiya idhalamay, engke vande, mother mulama than pandhano, solare, solare, engke solale avaru. Ananam, matthayathara sollidukarale, tessaan, yavala sollidukarare, avodiyah matthayathila allan romba thelivasollidukarare. Ennodiyah edhuni practice pandhano, nadaimaripaduthano abdina, live divine la enna sollidukono, adhuni nadaimaripaduthano abdina. Adhuk vande, ni motherodiyah, motheratni fulla, ni vande ona opadacha abdina, the motherodiyah grace work pani, nambo ennaana panna, saadikiru ennakirama, avlotu, motherodiyah help kedikkum. Ananala, nambar live divine padikranaali, idhalaa vande, ayu romba, uyerntha karuthukala arukka, namblala, namblala saathiyama, nenekkuvay thaeve illa. The motherodiyah grace vande, idhi avlotu, nambluk yelidhaki koduthro. Provided we are sincere, we should be sincere, nambar aspiration idhundhu abdina. Nambar, engke live divine la padikke kodu, ovvaru vishyathime, manidha, ma, mother vande, adhi implement pandrathuk, motherodiyah grace vande namblak helpfula arukko. Idhelaamayana, yes sir.
Lord Krishna sonnadu karana, prepare Arjuna to understand the practice of bringing heat mine on the field of multiplicity to that of eternal unity. Adham basic reason abdingarare.
Yes sir, yes sir. Enakenna romba achinima arukkana, nambar, live divine padikron, padikron, geetala padik, geetala padik, ovvar karuthume vande, avlotu thupodinga. Uh, what I mean to say is that, Sharabindho has synthesized everything into his writing. Eh, edhala, of course Bhavat Kida itself, it is a synthetic knowledge andhova, Bhavan enna kusollu, abdina? The most synthetic of synthetic knowledge, Bhavat Kida abdingarare. Adhuk munadi irunda vedham, upanishchats, ellatiyum, adhul later pirilla vandhanala, it is the most synthetic knowledge vande Bhavat Kida abdingarare. Again, adhi ellathimay uladaki Bhavanodiyah, Bhavan engke konvandittar nambluk, live divine la pathina. Whatever, my ellathimay solladhu, ellathimay vande oru, one numberanala, Bhavan has brought.
Yeah. Thank you sir.
Thank you. Romba Sundarsar sonnadu romba armiyana karuthu. Adavathu, nambar, the self-knowledge, idu vande, nambar than, we have, nambo unmayana self ennaankaradhu, nambar than vande, amththiriyama arukro. In fact, the Ramakrishnanodiyah kuttikathira kodu arukka, oru singha vande thani aarun enghathu, unarabaaradhu than. Thanni kodukapambodhu than thanu oruvathapathona, oh, naa singamma abdina, appadha than garchikaravamchida. Then only it realize it, I am, I am, naan vande, I am, naan vande, singga abdingaradhu, appadha unandhu than. Adhupoala, nambo vande, aarun thanam unarabaarukro. The once nambar aarun than unandittom abdina, naturally nambluk indhivishya ellamay vande, uh, yelidhaamudiyam nambluk. Adhutthu paragraph polla manba.
Ah, yes sir. Paragraph four. Thus, by the very nature of the world play, as it has been realized by Sachidananda, in the vastness of his existence, extended as space and time, we have to conceive first of an involution and a self-absorption of conscious being into the density and infinite divisibility of substance. For otherwise, there can be no finite variation. Next, an emergence of the self-imprisoned force into formal being, living being, thinking being, and finally, a release of the formed thinking being into the free realization of itself as the one and the infinite at play in the world and by the release of its recovery of the boundless existence consciousness bliss that even now it is secretly, really and eternally. This triple movement is the whole key of the world enigma.
Thank you sir, thank you, thank you.
Thank you sir.
In the paragraph, kulla, porathkunadi, naoro, unur karutha sollavurumpran, pona paragraph, vande, the, in the effort kala pinnadi, nambar, self-realize pandrathu ellami. Ipva vande, nambrudaya vedantik teachings, idhala, andha line la pono abdina. Uh, advaitik teachings, alavande self-realization, andha path, adhuk romba, ala stress, adu than. Ananambrudaya, um, the traditional, uh, yogaas la vande, idhi unmaygal sollu, alavona sandehinga illa. Ananal, andha unmayliyadayakkoodiya, andha mayarchi vande, andha, parayachittham vande, oru tanimananodiyah, moru effortai saarndhey than, amayidhu, angiyon divine grace silkillanilla, but again, uh, adhu vande, thanimanidhan than vande, andhathila vande, onodiyah pankar romba mukkamaha arikindhu. Anan, engke, namblukla oru periyay oru kodai, oru vibe ennaana? Indha mayarchi vande, enna than vande oru, uh, oru periyay oru Himalayan taska irundharan kodaa. Idhuk vande, motherodiyah grace enginthra oru magic carpet, idhu vande, magic carpet thana sollu. Eppri oru magic carpet, andhakarpitla okanda, adhu vande, nambar abdii, kundubai norathukachiro. Mayakambalam nambar padichirukka, adhupadhu than, namblukai, andha, oru bakka, Bhavanodiyah karuthakal, idhalaa vande, romba arputumana arukku. Adhi eppri implement pandrathu, adhu pandrathun, eppri namna nadaimaridha namkondavaradhu, abdingaradhu kundhu, nambluk kethathirakkoodiya, andha mayakambalam vande, motherodiyah, mother and motherodiyah grace surrender to the mother than. Adu ennaaidu, andha motherat vanta paro, adu vande, indha veely ellamay vande, nambrudaya aspiration sincere arukorikya, andha, in the implementation part, adu vande, motherodiyah help naala, romba sikramaadhu, helpfula arukko. Ena, oru, Sundarsar sonnamaru, how to the self, implementation part vande romba mukkyo. Andh implementation partuk, motherodiyah grace vande, romba, romba helpfula arukko. Adu vande, nariyabradha vaalkaila nambar pathirukko. Mother, motherodiyah grace vande, adhukaahave irukkaramariyayirukko. Ni vaavunaka help pandra, ni vaabdingaramariyay, kathukondukramariyay, namblakai kodutha thukkathuk, kathirtukramariyay, andha force vande, ellavidham mayarchila nambluk, uh, oru, orudanaya arukko. Adu than, engke arukkoodiya, namblukandha, puranayathukarukkoodiya, oru periyay oru, oru thanichirappunenina solluvay. Adhuka mattathala na vande, koraythu, mari, madhippitala. Indha variy vande oru, idhu vande divine, divine vande namblu, manidhakulathirka, eerpaduthikodu, amayuthu than, andha, andha amayuthu. Idhu vande, namblu, namblukalaa kethathu oru periyay ariyavaiipu, adu than, namge, theliupaduthu oru paranana. Idhala, in the paragraphla Bhavan. इधर इन डी परेग्राफ लाल भगवान कुरकोड़िया ना अब दीना पौना परेग्राफ लाल पातो ओर तनिमन अन्न तन डिया अवन इरक्कू नेले रह कर रही क्यों इंद्र सचित अनंद अवन मुझमें ये वन अड़े मुड़िया दे यानी अंदर लाल वंदे ओर वार्यार्क कुट सैल बड़म ओर जीवन आर के इंद्र अवन वंद आदि कारण दे अवन डिया उन्मय ना डिवाइन एस्पेक्ट एवं रिलीज पन्ना ना पन्ना वेंडम अप्पोर दा वंद अवन अवन अंदर इरण द अंदर अनंतत द लॉस्ट इनफिनिटी आदि अवन मीठ कोनरा कोल्ड मी अमीन अवन मीठ के वेंडम इन तक करते भगवान कोरिको वरी यूरिक कोरिना अदालत डी लॉस्ट इनफिनिटी डी इंडिविजुअल हैव तू रिकवर डी लॉस्ट इनफिनिटी डी मीठ कोनरदल आदि दा नांगे भगवान वंद कोरी उल्ला डी मीठ कोनरदल ले डी तनिमन अन्न डिया तनिमन अन्न डिया निले इन ना अब दीन ग्राद ले विलक्की रहा द विलाकत नोड़ी एल्ब प्रबंधन डियल बस यह बादल ले तनिमन अन्न अमिंद उल्ला ना तनिमन अन्न वंद पाकरो नम्मो वंद अवन इरण दुल्ला अंदर अनंतम अंदर इनफिनिटी इनफिनिटी वंद अवन मीठ कोनर वेंडो अप्परी पट ओर नेले ले इरक्कू मावन इप्पोन वंद सैल बॉडी अप्परी अमिंद उल्लद अवन डिया रोल इन ना अब दीन ग्राद पति भगवान इनके विलक्की इन रहा डी एंटर प्रबंधन डिया सैल बॉडल ले मन अन्न इन गिनर अमैप आदि नोड़िया पर्पस इन ना गोल इन ना डी गोल ले अप्परी अवन वंद अप्परी निराय वेटर पोहिरा इन र करते भगवान इनके विलक्की उल्ला नम्मो एक्सप्लेनेशन उल्ला पोलन
पढ़ी गई मैन सर
पढ़ी मैन प्लीज
व्हाट इस डी प्रोसेस ऑफ मैन बाय विच डी इंडिविजुअल रिकवर डी लॉस्ट इनफिनिटी स्पेस एंड टाइम और नथिंग बट सचित अनंद इन इस एक्जिस्टेंस एक्सटेंडेड इन वास्तुनेस देयर इस एन इन्वॉल्यूशन डी इस गोइंग विदिन एंड सेल्फ अब्सॉर्प्शन कंसंट्रेशन ऑफ कॉन्शियस बीइंग इन सब्सटेंस मटेरियल फॉर डेंसिटी एंड इनफिनिटी डिविजिबिलिटी ऑर डी कैरेक्टरस्टिक ऑफ डी फॉर्म सब्सटेंस डेट कॉस्ट फाइनेट वैरिएशन इन डी फॉर्म्स वी सी इन दिस वर्ल्ड सचित अनंद विच इस वन बिकम्स मेनी इन डी मैनिफेस्टेड वर्ल्ड इन मल्टीप्रेसिडेंट इट इस किडन बिहाइंड डी ओपोजिट लाइक इवेल एंड सफर डी इंप्रिजेंट फोर्स इन डी फाइनेट सब्सटेंस इमर्जेस्ट इनटू डी फॉर्मल बीइंग मैटर लिविंग बीइंग प्लान्स एंड अनिमल्स एंड थिंकिंग बीइंग मैन डी फॉर्म थिंकिंग बीइंग इस रिलीज इनटू डी फ्री रिलीजेशन ऑफ इट्सेल्फ आस डी वन एंड डी इनफिनिटी आते प्ले इन डी वर्ल्ड डी लिमिटेड एगोसेंट्रिक इंडिविजुअल बिकम्स वन विद डी यूनिवर्सल बीइंग अटैनिंग ऑफ कॉन्शियस बाय डी रिलीज ऑफ डी थिंकिंग बीइंग थिंकिंग बीइंग फ्रॉम इट्स फाइनेट सेल्फ इट रिकवर डी बाउंडलेस एक्जिस्टेंसेस कॉन्शियसनेस ब्लिस सचित अनंद दिस सचित अनंद इस नथिंग बट इट्स सीक्रेटली इट्स रियलिटी इट्स एटरनल प्रश्न दिस ट्रिपल मोमेंट इन्वॉल्यूशन इमर्जेंस फाइनल रिलीज इनटू इनफिनिटी इस डी होल की ऑफ डी रिडल विथ इस पज़्ज़ल ऑफ डी वर्ल्ड थैंक यू
इल्लाह भगवान वंद रोम्ब अर्पण मां कोरी इरकर इन द विलाकत विलाकम वंद पोदरा अर्क नम्मो के एल्लामी पोदरा अर्क नम्मो यह अर्करो ओर इंडिविजुअल डिया रोल इन ना इधर लाल नम्मो वंद रिनेक्स पता नम्मो के ओर ओर साधारण मन अलवल लिर्न संधि चप्पता अब दीना नम्मो के कोण पुरी आदा पोदरा अर्क दे अन्न अल्लाह लेट के पिन्नाड़ी वंदे ओर उन्नतम नोकम इरके इंद्र दे ने भगवान कोरी इन रहा अंदर प्रोसेस इन दे एक वाइन इन ना अब दी एंड विदमा का सैल पढ़ी करते नदा भगवान आरागा विलक्की इन रहा
वी हैव तू कन्सीव फर्स्ट ऑफ एन इन्वॉल्यूशन एंड डी सेल्फ अब्सॉर्प्शन ऑफ कॉन्शियस बीइंग इनटू डी डेंसिटी एंड इनफिनिटी डिविजिबिलिटी ऑफ सब्सटेंस फॉर अदरवाइस देयर कैन बी नो फाइनेट वैरिएशन नेक्स्ट एन इमर्जेंस ऑफ डी सेल्फ इंप्रिजेंड फोर्स इनटू फॉर्मल बीइंग लिविंग बीइंग थिंकिंग बीइंग एंड फाइनली ए रिलीज ऑफ डी फॉर्म्ड थिंकिंग बीइंग इनटू डी फ्री रिलीजेशन ऑफ इट्सेल्फ आस डी वन एंड डी इनफिनिटी आते प्ले इन डी वर्ल्ड इन द मुख्यमा ना करते इधर वंद तिरपी तिरपी पाक कोड़े करते भगवान वंद ओवर चैप्टर लिए विलक्की गिरा रदे तमन डिया मूड निले हल ले विलक्कर रदे सबकॉन्शियस लेवल ला मैटर मैटर ले द अदर तनले अदर तनले ना विलक्कर रदे इधर वंद रोम्ब भगवान डिया करते कल वंद नम्मो एर कन्ने पात इरको रिपेटिटिव आर करना मारी इर्द आलम कोड आदि ला वंद ओर उन्मय इरको आयोडीन कारणत का दान भगवान वंद रिपीट आवंद नम्मो के सोल्ड इरकर रहा है एस्पेशली इन डी इन्वॉल्यूशन इवॉल्यूशन अब दीन ग्राद कांसेप्ट वंद भगवान वंद ओवर चैप्टर लिए रिपीट पंड्रो अन्न अल्लाह नम्मो ओर चैप्टर ले सरिया उल्वांगले ना कोड़ा अदर चैप्टर नम्मो उल्वायक लाल अदा इन लाइव डिवाइन लो बड़े ओर पर्स पॉइंट ओर चैप्टर लो न पुरी ना कोड़ा तिरपी नम्मो के पुरूषरो अन्न अल्लाह दान ओर कारणत ओर दान भगवान वंद नारियल नम्मो विषय तक पातो अब दीना रिपेटिटिव आर को नम्मो दान इधर पात इरकर मेंगर इन नाम तोनो अन्न आदि को रुकारण अर्क आदि के पिन्नाड़ी आदि दान भगवान वंदे इस मारी ओर मुख्यमा ना सोल्ड इरकर नम्मो पातो नम्मो मन अन्न वंद तन इरण द अंदर इनफिनिटी स्टेटस आदि अवन मीठ कोनर वेंडम इन तक करते पोना वरदे पौना परेग्राफ लाल पातो अप्परी अंदर प्रोसेस ले अप्परी तनिमन अन्न अदे अंदर अदे अप्परी वैटरिकर महा निराय वेटर मुड़ियो सचित अनंद अवन पूर्णत वत्ती अवन इप्परी अड़े मुड़िया मिनर करते आई अंदर करते ला वंद तनिमन अन्न इन द नेले इप्पोर दे इरक्की इंद्र इन र वंद अंदर प्रोसेस वंद सैल बॉडी भगवान वंद विलक्की उल्ला यप्रिद विलाकत नोड़े सैल बॉडी इन ना विलाकत नोड़े सैल बॉडी इन ना विलाकत रोम्ब रोम्ब करते कल उन्मय कान्विक उन्मय तन्नुल अडकी ओर परेग्राफ दे एंड द स्पेस एंड टाइम स्पेस एंड टाइम अब दीन ग्राद रोम्ब पाकरो द स्पेस एंड टाइम अब दीन ग्राद द कालम एडम इधर इधर वंद नथिंग बट सचित अनंद अब दीन रहा इन इस एक्जिस्टेंस एक्सटेंडेड इन वास्तुन सचित अनंद दा तन्नी परंध वेलील तन्नी वेलीपड़ती वेलीपड़तमा रामिंद उल्लद अप्परी इन ना अब दीना स्पेस एंड टाइम नथिंग बट सचित अनंद इन इस एक्जिस्टेंस एक्सटेंडेड इन वास्तुनेस ओर परंध वेलील तन्नी पार्पी कोड सचित अनंद अमिंद उल्लद अप्परी पट ओर सचित अनंद इन ना अप्परी इन द प्रबंधन को वेलीपड़त कोल्के इंद्र राल देयर इस एन इन्वॉल्यूशन इन्वॉल्यूशन इंद्र उन रुक उन रुक कुल तन्नी मर्त्त सुरकी कोल्व इन्वॉल्यूशन इंद्र देयर इस एन इन्वॉल्यूशन डेट इस गोइंग विदिन अप्पर सेल्फ अब्सॉर्प्शन सेल्फ अब्सॉर्प्शन ना ओर कांसंट्रेटेड आयु कुल फुल्ला तन्नुल फुल तन्नुल उल्ला सक्ति अनित्य में ओर इरत तक को विद्या कोल्व द सेल्फ अब्सॉर्प्शन ऑफ कॉन्शियस बीइंग इन सब्सटेंस मटेरियल फॉर मैटर कुल आदि इन्वाल्ट अर्क दे नम्मो पाकर मारी जड़पुर इन द करते भगवान वंद अधिकारी रिपीट पंड्रो यानी ना नम्मो पाक कोड़े ना कानकोड़े इन द जड़पुर लानी तुम्ही तन्नुल इन द उनर विनय ले उल्ला उनर विनय तन्नुल तक का वाइट तुम्हारा द देयर इस एन इन्वॉल्यूशन ऑफ कॉन्शियसनेस इन ईच मैटर मटेरियल फॉर्म अदर ते वंद सो वंद वन फर्स्ट स्टेटस स्टेटस वंद इन डी स्पेस एंड टाइम ला परंतु विरंध उल्लद अप्परी पट अंदर सचित अनंद डी इन्वॉल्यूशन मूलमान द मैटर कुल जड़पुर कुल तन ईरंगी तन्नी मर्त्त को दुल्लद अंग तन सक्ति अनित्य को विद्या को दुल्लद आदि दे मुख्यमा अम्संग इन नाम पातो ना डेंसिटी डेंसिटी ना ओर अटर्टियान तन्मी डेंसिटी अप्पर इनफिनिटी डिविजिबिलिटी अदालत तन्नी पकत कोड़े सेल्लम नम्मो पाक कोड़े प्रबंधन तल पाक कोड़े एल्ला फॉर्म्स में पातो ना रे लेटर ओर पकते ठे पोलन लिए डिविजिबिलिटी इनफिनिटी डिविजिबिलिटी इधर दा अदा मुख्यमा अम्संग इन द इन द अम्संग वंद यदि तोटर विकेंद्र ने इन राल ओर मार बट्ट तोटरंग ले उर्वाकी इंद्र फाइनेट वैरिएशंस इन डी फॉर्म्स वी सी इन डी नम्मो को विलाकत इल्का नकोड़े वडिवंगल एल्लामी पातो ना ओवर कुरप्पट वडिवत कुल नारियल वडिवंगल पाकरो ओर जो जी अनिमल्स ने अर्थ तो ना डिफरेंट काइंस ऑफ अनिमल्स अन्न ला आदि को रुक पट अम्संग ले उड़िया अनिमल्स ओर वही नो अर्थ तो ना ओर ओर ना
என்னுடைய அணிமல்ஸா ஒரு வகைனு எடுத்துட்டு நான் ஒரு ஒரு இருந்தா இருக்கோம். ஆனா அதே மாதிரி வெவெர் ஜிவராசில் இருக்கோம். பிளான்ஸ் நடுத்துட்டு நான் வெவெர் ஜிவராசில் இருக்கு. மினரல்ஸ் நான் வெவெர் ஜிவராசில் இருக்கு. ஏதாவது பக்வான் என்ன கொடுகிறார்ங்கள்? They cause finite variations in the forms we see in the worlds. Finite variations. ஒரு எல்லை குட்டபட்டு தான் இருக்கோம். ஆனா நிறைய இருக்கோம் அதே மாதிரி. The Satchidananda which is one, that is one. Satchidananda ormai. That is the Palavaraa that is the way to go. The Vlogathal on the it is expressing in. One becomes many in the manifested world. இந்த பலவாராகத்தை வெளிப்படுத்திக் கொள்ளும்போது என்ன எடுத்து படிநா? தன்னை அதற்கு எதிரான நிலைகளில் மறித்து கொள்கிறது. எது எதிரான நிலைகள்? The evil suffering. இதெல்லாம் சச்சிதானந்தாவின் எதிரான நிலைகள். So, one raahayiruthu koodiyasachidhananda. That is more meaahahirikindradu. The world will be led by the Palavaraa that is the way to go. Avar Palavaraa that is the way to go. Then the other non-normative. Other non-normative. Then the other non-normative. Then the other non-normative. Then the other non-normative. Then the other non-normative. So, this is the first status. The second is that the truth is not there. The earth is there but it is lost. That is why the stop oil. The imprisoned force in the finite substance emerges into a formal being. That is. Formal being. Once inside it is asleep. That is not there. It is not up. First of all, the matter is there. The ground is there. Then the living being is there. Living being and plants and animals are there. Then the thinking being is there. The mind is there. So, inside the. The 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 invalidated force on the. It is the way to go. This is the. The earth is the mind that is the way to go. The earth is not there. The dead state is the way to go. A thinking being. A thinking being. A thinking being. That is the way to go. This is the. This is the. This is the mind is there. He is a dead state. He is on the. Once he is in the state. He is destroyed. That is the one and infinite. That is the original status of the infinite. He is born. This is the entire process of the world. This is the body of the world. So, the mind is there. The state is now. We are in a dead state. This is the next state. This is the state. This is the state. This is the state. Then we are the infinite. Everything is infinite. If you say it, we will see. Infinite is infinite. If it is infinite, there is no silencer. The mind is on the. The mind has an option. What option? The infinite is. The finite is the super mind. This is the. This is the grace of God. The grace of God. The concept is realized. That is the. For the birth of man, it is a supplemental force. That is the earth. They are there. The earth is active. The supplemental force. The super mind is. The. The finite is. The infinite is. The dead state is there. This is the two of them. I think. The state of the mind is there. What is it? He is still in the state of the mind. He will be still having all the characters of the infinite. So, if you say it, how to erase the infinite? A mind. The supplemental status is erased. Then the infinite status is erased. This is the fact that God is very clever. A mind is on the. If you are in the ego that is safe. If you are in the state of the state. The proper language is first changed. The cosmic consciousness is changed. Changed. Completely, he is the one who has left. That is. He is the one who is lost. He can get it. That is what God says. The Satchidananda is more meaahah. He is very clever. He can get it. That is what God says. The triple movement. The triple movement is the involution. Emergence, involution. Inside, asleep. Sleeping. Sleeping is the one who is lost. Involusion is the truth. The truth. This is the grass asleep. Then the state is lost. The state is lost. That is the involution. Then emergence is revealed. Then the final release into infinite. Final release into infinite. The next stage. The emergence is the dead state. This is the state of the mind. This is what God says. It is the whole key of the riddle of the world. The world is not understood. But if it is not understood. Then it is the end. So, the state of the mind is a dead state. There is nothing else. The truth is revealed. The involution, emergence, final release is. God is on the. The. The other things. The gods. They have told us. They have told us. God is the one who has told us.
Sir, a little doubt. A little doubt. Key is said. Key is what? Poor is the sir. The world's enigma is there. That is the poor.
Actually, if you say it. Poor is the super mind.
Oh, oh.
See, the key is. The key is. We have found the key. This is the key of the riddle of the world. You said it. The key of the riddle of the world.
Oh, oh.
You said it. You heard it. The next paragraph five or six is there. We have found the key. But we are searching for the lock. That is.
Oh, oh.
We know what the key is. What is the key? Satchidananda is all inside. It is known. That is the key. But how to apply it? What is it? Satchidananda is realized. Where do they say it? That is Satchidananda. Above. Above. Above the higher levels. Above the higher plane. Satchidananda is there, is it not? Satchidananda is on the. Here is the world. The world is destroyed. Satchidananda is directly. It cannot be sailed. Satchidananda is directly. The world cannot be sailed. Hmm. Okay, that is the finite forms. The world is destroyed. Satchidananda is on the. The world is on the. The world is on the. It is more meaahah sailed. It is the need. The need is the super mind. So, through the super mind. Satchidananda is on the. It cannot be sailed. Without the super mind. Satchidananda is not sailed. Who is watching? Why? Satchidananda is infinite. The world is finite. Directly infinite is finite. It cannot be sailed. Infinite is finite. S sailed. It is the through the super mind. The finite forms are sailed. Once the super mind is realized. We will be in touch with Satchidananda. As long as we will be living in the mini. These are the two. That is the supplemental status. These are the two of them. I think. A mind is in a finite form. The infinite form is what I think. A power is sailed. The super mind. That is. That is the lock. That is. I asked another place. Actually, God has said. You said it. I asked. That is what God says. I asked another place.
Sir, this is a. A murandba is there. Satchidananda is on the. Infinite is on the finite. Why infinite is on the finite? Act cannot be done. Why it needs a medium? A medium is that is the super mind. A medium is the one who acts. I said. Then Satchidananda is. What is its capacity, is it not? Why it needs that in between? A mediation is needed. Why is it needed?
That is divine maya. We will see.
Oh, oh.
That is divine maya. It cannot be done directly. Infinite is by nature. It is infinite. That is directly. It will be. The finite will be destroyed, is it not? Think about it. Infinite is without any limits. A river is there. A river is a fish. A river is there. A river is a fish. A river. A channel. That is not possible, is it not? Directly a river is there. The world is destroyed, is it not? So, the world is finite. The forms of the forms are made. That is the channelized. That is possible. That is the. The dead state is the super mind. Divine maya. Divine maya. That is. Infinite, finite.
It is.
It is. It is divine maya.
Divine maya. Hmm.
Infinite is infinite. Infinite is directly. Act. Do not. It cannot be done.
His force cannot be done.
Cannot be done.
His force cannot be done.
Yes, yes. That is what they say. Even the super mind. The supplemental force could. Human beings cannot be done. You are on the. That is. Evolved. You can. You can display the supplemental force. We are in the state of the super mind. The supplemental force descended. We completely dissolved. If God does it. They have done so much. 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 They have done so much.
Yes.
The human being cannot be done. It is impossible.
So, the part of it is the mother. On the supplemental force. It was erected in nineteen fifty six. So that it will go on acting on the world.
Yes, correct. The supplemental. This is the. When the manifest开始了. One one nineteen sixty nine. The manifest开始了. The supplemental force descended. The two phases. First is the descent. That is the twenty ninth February nineteen fifty six. Then one one nineteen sixty nine. That is the state of the state. That is why the children. All of them are very. They are very good. One one nineteen sixty nine. Now we have a lot of children. There are children. One one nineteen sixty nine. Then the children are all. Very. Their. Their capacities are on a higher level. That is what their mother says.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Rangarajan.
Yes, sir.
Sir, Rangarajan. Sir, this is. The vision and the bone. Truth born too soon might break the imperfect earth.
Super, sir, super, super. Excellent, excellent, excellent. Very good. Exactly, you said.
My. I said my. They are the. The teacher.
The teacher is sitting. Life is not going to come. It is the same. Thank you, Rangarajan, sir.
Sir, sir, I heard. Truth born too soon shall break the world. Truth. Truth born too soon shall break the world.
Might break.
Might break the world. I do not know. But they are talking.
Vision and.
Vision and the bone. Ah.
Divine mother is. Divine mother is Ashrapati. She says. You. You. You have done all this. You cannot be done. You cannot do it. You are a darsana man. But you are on the world. You cannot be done.
That is the last word. Man is too weak to bear the infinite weight.
Super, excellent, excellent, excellent. Very good, sir. Thank you, thank you, sir.
Bear the infinite weight. Truth born too soon might break the imperfect earth.
Thank you, sir, thank you. The man is good. You are on the way. It is not possible. That is the right. That is the right. That is the right. Even. You said it. Madam, infinite directly act. What is it? Now we can see. We can see. We do not understand. Everything is. What do they say? There is a pressure of the supplemental force on the plane. On the plane. Now we are on three walls. We sail in the world. Manodalam. The white manodalam mental plane. Vital plane. Physical plane. Now the vital plane is on the. The pranamaya world is on the. Is it not?
Yes, yes.
On the. On the. Now the supplemental descent is. There is a pressure on the vital plane. That is why the sailboards are destroyed. That is why. Now a lot of children. Vital pranamaya. The world of pranamaya. The way to see. A lot of crimes. This is. That is. The epidemics. Pandemics. This is. The vital beings. The virus. The virus. This is. We can see. A lot of children. This is. What is it? There is. There is a pressure on the vital plane. That is why it reacts. But this is temporary. This is one of the reasons of. One of the. What do they say? Um. Fallouts of the supplemental descent. The supplemental. Sometimes the supplemental force acts. Sailed. Now. These are some. Black lines. But temporary. This is not good. What is it? That is a great force. On the world. Asleep. We are on the. We are on the. We are on the. The unconscious is the reason. The unconscious. Everything is. That is why the force is needed. To react. When it is reacted. Since till it cooperates fully. There is some reaction. At the physical level. Physical matter level. Reaction. That is. Vital, mental, mental level. Reaction. But it is not good. So, what is it? The super mind is. If it is like this. If it is like this. Naturally, you are not able to bear.
Hmm, correct, correct. The little kid. He asked. A salmon asked. He said. He was scared. Then he was scared. Then he was scared. Now the world is scared.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. The mother said. The nature has agreed to collaborate. That is what they say. The nature has already agreed to collaborate with the new world. That is.
Are you ready? You are standing.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Paragraph five, let us.
Sir, I would like to ask.
Please, madam, you asked.
Ah, what? On the. Our group. A lot of students are studying. I am limited knowledge. That is why a doubt was. The mind is broken. What is the example? We are saying. The mind is broken. The center of the infinite cosmic conscience. When it is born, we will understand everything. That is. The mind is. Can I say? Because I do not understand.
The mind is. Then you said it. You are studying. A lot of students are studying. That is what you said, is it not? But that is. That is not a thing. That is why I will say. You are on the. When a grandmother is open. A surrender. That is the most important. Studying is. This is a kind of a tradition. A friend is a way. The earth is there. When a grandmother is on the. It is more meaahah. You have done it. Then the rest. The importance is not said. But the most important is that. That is what we do. Because you study. A lot of students study. 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 The path. We are on the. We are on the. We are on the. We are on the. All are. A grandmother is. The mind is writing. The deity is surrendering. Then we have progress. Studying. If there is progress. The same progress is there. That is why I have told. The second is. The mind is broken. That is what God says. Our mind has a lot of ideas. Opinions. One thing. That is. We have opinions. We have ideas. We have a idea. Is it not? The ideas are on the. On the. On the. All things. We have a idea. We have likes and dislikes. We have opinions. Judgments. This is. First, we have. The private. The private. We have a little. The private. We have to think. That is the first step. The second is. The mind is a little. Okay. Amity. Do not. The mind is silenced. It is difficult to do. Because we are. We are scared. We are not scared. The mind is. The physical is scared. The mind is working. The mind is working. But at least if God says. What is it? The thoughts are running. The thoughts are running. You are standing. You are an observer. You watch all your thoughts. Watching the. Watching all the thoughts. The first step. The first step is that. We are on the. What is the thought? We are on the. It is not possible to make a mistake. That is a big. The mother says. That is a big yogi. Complete silencing of the mind. A big yogi can do. That is not everyone's fault. That is why the mind is not needed. We are on the. What is it? We have a thought. The thought is on the. That is not possible. We are standing. What is the thought? Do not observe. Tell. What is it? When it is shining.